Saying that there was supposed to be a map.
No map.
Okay, I just had a couple of uh neighbors that were supposed to be here and they said they called someone and they said it isn't for me. Tonight wasn't for it, but I was like, no, come on up. I don't think they showed up, but I came anyway and went out to see what this was about. Um, there was no map. And I'm just here to see what's going on, what, what, what was the map supposed to be? That we didn't have, that was stated in the letter.
So, this is for the uh local comments to add um four more units to the apartment building.
I think so.
As opposed to his property.
Yes, right.
Right behind me. His property is right.
Exactly.
The property is right behind.
So the board is requesting to add four more units to this apartment.
Okay, so they'll just notify them.
Then that's right.
Yeah.
Their property is. New process.
Thank you. Did that clear it up for you, sir?
Yeah, yes, yes, and I can pass it on to the other neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. B? We're closing, we're meeting most of the public here. All in paper. Now, we're going into public, proposed rezoning request for properly located east side of Chesterfield Road, seven forty-two south across from IGA to be rezoned to general build a retail store. Anyone to hear to speak on that? Please come on.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm sick, that's why I got to my office. Um, I don't even know what to say, all I know is I've been at that store, Stop and Shop, you should call the pit about eight, thank you. Um, so brought my attention by Army, the store right above me, that they were trying to build a Dollar General over there. So I've been there for two years, going on eleven. Um, I don't know how long Top Mart I did in there, I've been there for generations on this store. Um, it's already hard where we're at because of the neighborhood, the violence, short staffed police until now. Um, I got three kids, I live in Charlotte, I maintain the store by myself, it's already hard. I can only imagine bringing the Dollar General to sell the exact same things that we all sell, I have three employees plus myself. We all sell the same things. If the Dollar General was to come over there now, IGA, Top Mart and myself would probably, one of us or not two of us, have to do our business. I got three kids, I worked hard for ten years to build that store up to where it is now, I hope it needs to be better, I'm trying to get it franchised as we speak. So bringing the Dollar General and to rezone it, it's like, there's so many things Waze Girl needs besides another Dollar General. Um, so many people are drunk, so many homeless people outside my store that I feed every day. Um, there's so much other things that I feel like Waze welcome bring, I'm not a politician, I'm not part of the town, I spoke to Mr. Schnubs, he's listened to me, he helped me out plenty of times, so it's better, thank God for him. I'm so glad that you came back. Um, I don't know if our word means anything, because that's what I told him prior to this, I know my voice is small. But, like I said, I worked from the ground up to get that store to where it's at now, and if the Dollar General was to come over there, this is gonna affect me personally, because I'm already a mom pop store, it's already hard into that area. If you guys want to do anything for the town, I feel like you should guys help make that area a better area, safer area, before you think about bringing something else to that area. Uh, and that's all I have to say.
And what, what was your name?
Mary, I'm gonna take my mask off.
No, it's okay, Mary, I'd like to get your contact information after the meeting, okay? So we got some ideas for.
Okay.
So you've got, your store is from IGA?
Yeah, I'm the one that have the car wash at the bottom, called Stop and Shop, if y'all ever stop by.
Okay. And the other store is.
Top Mart, that's his store, the Arco.
So you have, you go, you have, you got three people on staff.
Yeah, I have three employees, exactly, and already, as of now, we're already trying to cut back because of inflation, stuff's so high, prices are expensive, so we're trying to cut back as much as we can, but if the Dollar General was to come, we definitely would have to reconsider staying away from it. Already not enough money to go around as it is, with three buildings there, selling the exact same thing, thank God, we all have our own customers, but if the Dollar General comes, they sell everything cheap and all three of us put together, how many people at IGA are gonna lose their jobs? Because the Dollar General comes, and not only that, I just feel like that area, where they're gonna put the Dollar General at, that road? And the, that area in general is not a safe area, and I just feel like, it being right there is a good target for them to want to come, you know, like if somebody wanted to rob the store or do anything, it's a good way for them to go straight down seven forty-two or one oh nine, where a lot of police don't go or can't catch them or whatever it takes to get, I'm not saying that would happen, but I'm pretty sure that's what's gonna happen if they come over there in that area, that's in the very corner, in the dark, where there's not enough light there, let me mention that now, I don't know who I could talk to about not being enough lights in that area, how dark it is over there. Um, you can't see anything on that street at night, it's very dark, I paid for three pole lights on my area to brighten up that area, but the whole street right there is pitch black, you can't even see anything. But that's another topic for another day, but I'm just mentioning that now in case you.
My concern is I understand your, your business, and my, my other concern is IGA, about a year ago, they were trying to sell. And I don't want to miss out on something, and then they gonna close anyway, so I, I'd like to maybe it's not, I do get to talk to them and see what their plan is doing.
I don't know if they're here or not.
I'm just talking to the business.
Yeah, I don't know, I might.
I want to get their side, brother.
And that might, we spoke, when he, actually, I only spoke to him, I'm not sure, but I know that he didn't have any intention of selling as of now or prior to this week, so it's outdoor. But as of now, IGA, IGA does want to continue staying business, and if there was a Dollar General there, I'm pretty sure they would probably wanna sell, the Dollar General paying us as long as they stay open. We got a store with the same exact competition, and that's what's cheaper prices, there's no point us being in there, so I could see them leaving now if there's Dollar General coming, but I didn't, I've never heard IGA get ready to sell prior to, I've heard it years, for years, for ten years since I've been here, but that was ten years ago, so.
I'll just, my, I'll make you lose those cats all the.
IGA sold, IGA sold once, but really, one and a half, someone bought it and fell through, so it's only been sold once. Chris Sanford ran it, it was a local community grocery store.
Right.
It was a local community grocery store when Mr. Sanford ran it, so it was sold one time to the record, it was one that someone was gonna buy, but it fell through, so it came to the people that now has it.
And if IGA did close, it wouldn't help the community, it would make it worse, because that's the only grocery store in that area, if they didn't have IGA, then I mean, everybody has to shop too, right? So I just don't understand why they would rezone an area and to bring something to shut down a store that's been there for decades. And that's all I got.
Mary, one more question. You said you feed homeless people from your stores.
It's not doing all the time.
Uh, about how many do you sell a week?
About five or six a week.
Every day?
Every time I work, I live in Charlotte, so I work three, four days a week during my work.
Okay, I know it's a drive, thank you for doing that.
I live in there, here, just now, six, to make this meeting.
From Port Charlotte?
Uh, university area.
Thank you, uh, that's why I would like to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you guys for listening.
Works to do the same thing, and she's not there, they pay.
Oh, yeah.
I did that for my restaurant in Atlanta for years, and they were the ones that kept out, uh, their eyes on the place for me, and were able to, maybe that was fully there, yeah.
Uh, my name is Amit, and I had a business that was from the IGN, it's called Top Mart and Arco right now. So, first things I'm going to do, so your question about the bringing new business, town really need a business, not to lose the job, bring the industries, bring the good business, like recent company, get ten million dollar, uh, Amazon data center. You do not bring any business, big, like industries like. Uh, the way the mill closed down, not the Dollar General brings a business, Dollar General have only two people always in the city, so maybe they have ten or twelve employment. IGA already have thirty people, plus they hiring thirty employees, thirty, plus they hiring under five, I have seven employees, they have employees, so almost fifty employment. So, if you bring the Dollar General over there, then you're going to thinking to losing fifty employment and create only twelve jobs, what is that, that's creating the business or improving the town? No, this is not the improving the town, revenue wise, this is in the small neighborhood, how much the population go up in last few years, population go down in last year, it's living. So population going down, and the people who serve in this town for years, I'm in this town for twenty-five years, he knows, tell me knows, everybody know, I live in this town, I know how is this town going down every time, but nothing going on, and you want to bring the Dollar General, so revenue wise, we do same business, if Dollar General come in, they're going to do the same, revenue get it from me, her and IGA. But big people come in, they do anything to stay in the business, they're going to do anything and be out of the business. So basically, town losing forty or fifty employment, create twelve, that's good for you guys, then for that, then revenue, revenue we already doing that, it's not seventy-four or highway or anywhere like, people are going to come from other town to shop here, no, it's a neighborhood area, so they're the same neighborhood is there. So, if you're thinking business, thinking, yeah, it's good for the business, town, but not this kind of business, whoever existing business serving these people for years, so you want to make them down and close their door and bring the another business to make that money, so think about it.
I'm not saying close it, I was just asking a question.
No, no, you say I'm thinking to bring it, so I'm just trying to say that, many thinking, thinking the existing business, if the ex- existing business, Dollar General, what do you think, how much business we make, they make, and IGA make? Dollar General choose that side, so it's not choosing without any demographic or population or anything, okay? They know what they're going to make it, from where they're going to get that business, from, they're going to get the business from a street, nobody else. So, what they going to help, if you're not picking up money, town not having enough money, the police department don't, same thing as, like, if you not make money, we have to shut down the door, so what have going to happen? Employment is low, so you don't say that, indirectly you say that. It's like, okay, don't care, we bring the Dollar General over, keep the business, he came and talked to us, me, Mary and IGA manager on last week. Everybody talks same thing, nobody, he had, and he been in the town for twenty years, I don't know how he been here, or you know about this area, I don't know about that, maybe people who own this one, how many people in the town and living in that area, or shopping in the IGA, I don't know about that. But people who own that area and been living in the town, they know actually what is going on on that side of the town. So there's the employment, you want to lose the employment, then go ahead, if you want revenue, revenue, nothing going on, population is going down, so why you need it? And Dollar General, last week, there was a meeting on the zoning, they want to change the zoning. Zoning meeting, Dollar General represented him, they asked one question, what are you going to do rest of the land? They say that, we going to lose other business, but not the same business what we doing. These big people come in in the town on neighborhood area, and they don't want their competition in their area, then why we want it, same competition in our area, we are already existing there and serving the community for that many years. So, that's their point, and that's their words, they accepted in front of people who in the zoning, and that's why zoning not approved that. So, if you go, want to go beyond that, okay, we think like my, our town council is for town people, local people and local businesses, not for the big boss for it and all that. So, if you have a question, you can ask, and I can reply.
No, I, I was just, my question was, I'm not really a person, I was just asking, is, would it be a benefit for them to come here, would it be the tax off, how much people that we import, I haven't talked to you. This is the first I heard, this, this is the first I heard, I'm not saying to do it, I'm just waiting, I, I, I would deny, I would.
But that's why it's like a revenue point, you're not going to get any extra revenue, because it's the only small area, it's not the highway, or other town, it's not the Walmart, like, other town people coming, because Dollar General every corner, there's their teams, I know how is the corporate work, they want to put every ten mile one Dollar General, but they don't care for the local people, local businesses, they care their money and their growth. But town needs to look at the people who are in doing business and doing for that. IGA did for maybe forty years or fifty years, my store is for their like forty years, peace up, maybe owners change, but business there to serve the community, so.
So Dollar General coming in would, would be detrimental to you guys and IGA. Um, do you feel like you keep your buildings up, keep your curb appeal, keep your, your places looking nice to the public?
Hmm?
Uh, okay. The big thing I have, the big problem I have with Dollar General is that they don't, I've called this one down here, I've called the corporate office, I've called, we've called some of the others, I've put a, they see about how disgraceful they keep their stores and all the junk and litter outside, and I got CVS to do something about it. Uh, I go buy your stores, like, we have property over there, we're looking to buy more to, to, to build over there in a couple of years. Uh, and, and I do commend you, I commend you for hanging in there, small town businesses, our hometown businesses, our people that we should support, and be behind, and not let big companies come in there like Walmart's had, and other, uh, city stuff out this lane, and shut down my own businesses.
I need to, I need to.
Just hang in there.
I need to add one more question that, he talked to the IGA manager and I saw tour, but she has a prior commitment to see on the cruise, so she can't even come, but she already put his, her point to him about that, and Dollar General come in, they don't have a pro you, no meat or nothing. So, IGA's closed down, then they're monopolist and the food line, because then a whole town, he has only one grocery store to shop the people. And, I don't know what the people going to do with that.
Go to another place and spend the money?
Yeah, so, it's not growing up, it's just being.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Honor. Don't you.
Still coming behind that a bit.
Yeah. So just to clarify, my name's Knox Campbell, Beth Dodger's here, we work with the Keith Corporation, run Charlotte, North Carolina, so, uh, Beth lives in Union County, I live in Mecklenburg, uh, we are builders and developers, so we travel wherever our tenants want to take us, we do truck supply company, advance auto, some about rentals, but Dollar General is just one of our clients, we have the, have metro Charlotte area, eight or nine counties, and we do a little bit of work in West Virginia too. So we can't really speak on behalf of Dollar General, but we go identify a site, build a building, lease it to them, um, we do, I don't know, ten or twelve a year, but, you know, Dollar General was built on certain these types of constituents, I mean, I've, I've only argument I've heard, and I think what Beth heard last week, that the planning area was on competition, I mean, we were just asking really for a down zoning from light industrial to retail, but in the spirit of transparency, the site plans and whatnot, we, you know, indicated what we intended to do, but I don't, maybe ask, um, the, the town attorney, but I, I mean, if there's reasons that people are worried about the traffic or other concerns, I mean, we're happy to have those conversations, but I don't think competition's really a reason, is it? Sorry?
So I was at a meeting, um, but I'll, I'll answer any questions that, that my client has, has.
Here, here, here is an image here, so, Long Highway seventy-four, that's five DG's, five. Starts at, hold, I mean, starts at H, hold, right there in the section of fifty-two and seventy-four, then you go right down here to, like you're going in the lot, right across the street, close to Bojangles', and then you go down in lot, that's, that's five, straight down seventy-four. Then, then, I've been here since Dollar General's been here, I have not heard, I have not heard one sizable contribution that Dollar General has poured in this community. They're taken, they are taken, they are taken, and so if you're not given and taken, why? You, you, so you're not, you're not from here, you, it's all a convenience store, they all, it's all processing food, they don't sell fruits and vegetables, IGA does, okay? So, I would go with IGA, they don't sell fruits and vegetables, they don't, you don't, they, so, but you're a major company, DG.
So I, I don't, just.
You, 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 you're not coming, yeah. We need the company, I don't need the architect or any of that here, you building the building, we need the people, the DG people here before this boy do anything, I don't have a vote, but they need to come to the table.
Okay, we, we're happy to ask them.
They need to come to the table, sir.
But, but on the, I mean, there's probably seventy, like eighty percent of what they sell are not gonna be sold across the street in either direction, either they sell sonas and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, shelf stable food, sure, but there's a lot of toys and home goods and accessories that.
Is this helping the DG markets that sell?
I don't, so we don't have control of that, they would not put a DG market almost ever next to their stores, so that the plan, it's not now, but I can't sit up here and say this, because I don't work for Dollar General next to this, it's just that the plan is to not be a market.
You, you building the building.
Correct, and so, and we would own it, or for without it.
You would own it, but, again, for the council, we need to choose here.
You think you can get in here before?
Most of them said the same thing, most Dollar Generals.
Yeah, yeah.
That's their market, do you think that you can get a representative from Dollar General to buy next one?
I would get a hundred percent arrange a meeting, but I mean, they're in Goodwoodville, I don't, I mean, I think it's unlikely, we could maybe get someone, I, I just have to ask, again, I can't, I can't speak to them for them.
If they're not interested enough to come to stick for this board, then you're not interested enough to talk to them, I mean, seriously, uh, uh, the mayor said that they need to have a stake in this community, they need to take better care of their property, young man, I think you're on Cameron Valley Parkway, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we had a bank years ago, it was a, a very successful venture, but we gave back to the community, so the Bank of Mecklenburg back in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, you don't live here, and she is in Union County, which is a whole, apples to oranges type of thing, uh, we don't need another Dollar General. Uh, we really don't, now, if you want to come in here and, 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 because we all have our products from the same area, I think, the, uh, products that you offer, um, you know, u- until we know what it is, if it's a Dollar General market or a Dollar General, it's just, um, I get everything every time I see that meme on Facebook, where they put the Dollar General, but this time it's on the moon of Mars, you know? People overbuild, we see it with Walgreens now, we see it with Backwoods, we see it with Rite Aid, they overbuild, they overextend, and then when they get dire straits, what do, what do they do, they start shutting down their lesser producing properties in these empty buildings, there's one sitting up here in Marshall, Radio Shatter, then they're empty for years. And then we're gonna have a bunch of empty buildings around here if DG tanks, uh, y'all just sold out of a Dollar Tree because it was tanking, so we don't want to be neglected that much, these people deserve it, or we deserve it, and, uh, if your people, if Dollar General, if your client cannot come in here and answer questions before the community they wish to say, uh, and answer some questions and get a little more involved in this community, I say goodnight.
Alright, I just. For every business here, you're selling products that our people are buying, and here's the thing in the nutshell, real quickly, Crisis Ministry right up here that serves a thousand people a month, they only have a pallet and a half of food.
That's right.
A pallet and a half of food, so businesses, whether you, the market, you, or whoever here, put up, go, 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 if you got, go donate to them, if DG comes here, the DG's just right here, put up, not you, sir. You, not you, not directed at you at all, okay, sir, not directed at you at all, I'm speaking with passion, because I've talked to the people, that I only have a pallet and a half of food. Then create, but we need help, and if Dog, if DG wants to meet, we're open, we're listening, but it needs to be a different perspective, because all DG do, Dollar General goes into high poverty and disease areas, that's where they go, that's where they make their money, that's their strategy. And so if you look around where they're at.
Which, they really build their company serving rural America.
Rural, right in the rural man, look where our stores.
And, uh, consumers are generally underserved by.
You're not trying to kill the messenger, we're just protecting our community, in fact, not only, it's just like you want to protect your, it's building a building and lease it to, to Dollar General, we respect that, I can respect that as an entrepreneur in the business, but I also have to respect this constituency, that deserves that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say one thing about his arguments, like, of course, the street people don't sell seventy-five percent of the food, but they sell what we sell hundred percent of the food, so there's the different way they try to pretend that, whatever they sell may be.
Cheaper.
No, 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 not cheaper, but they try to tell you that, like, whatever they sell it, we don't sell seventy-five percent of that on what they sell it, but what we sell it, they sell hundred percent item, so they try to put us down, that's the main thing for them.
I agree, I agree what you're saying, sir.
And, uh, IGA, like they buy the local grocery, they, so a lot of things is going out for them.
I stopped at both of your stores, I stopped at both of your stores, but again, store owners, we're struggling right up here at, 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 at the ministry, so, we're, we're struggling, so my plea to store owners, that was a great way to give.
So, I, about the community, it's the same thing, we, many say that, we do same thing.
Yeah.
We, we donate some to the police department, but they have some things going on, we donate a pallet of water to the school when they have something going on, we donate at the Harvest Ministry when they have a crisis, so whoever we know, we try to, yeah, so we try to do all that, so it's not, yeah, but Crisis Ministry, that's what we going to do, so that's the thing, like, every time anything comes to the community, we always.
Thank you, thank you. People are hungry, I hate to be, but people are hungry, and I can't sit here and be the mayor of this town and people are hungry, can't do it.
And it's struggling.
Alright, let's, uh, need to go out of, uh.
Close the.
Fuck, need to go out of the fuck here. Alright, we have all the favor. Alright, now we're out of focus here, alright, we have to take up the matter. Down, down at the bar, down at the bar, presentation of the, uh, new website.
Mayor, member council, um, the, when I, when we first got here, last year, the community complained about the old website, how outdated it was, not very community interactive, and so we have redone the website, uh, Ms. Lanice from, uh.
Small council.
Small council, uh, has done numerous of towns our size, um, she has revised websites, and, um, this is our new website, that's very interactive, just wanted to give you a short presentation of our website.
If we get going, airway. There, there you go.
Yay, there we are, there it is, let me search it, because it kind of messes up minutes, there we go, because it's mirroring my screen. Um, anyway, so this is the landing page for the new website, um, our focus was on one updating it, um, the old website was on kind of an outdated platform, an outdated code, um, websites update as fast as iPhones these days, so, um, you really have to kind of keep up with that. Um, this is also something where we put it on platform, where it'll be easy for people, um, like city staff or town staff to update, um, so we took that into consideration, but one of the biggest things that we look at, and we find this in all the towns that we deal with, is, you know, the way the government sees things, and how y'all call things and organize things, is different from how the public views them, right? You know, the way the government sees things and how y'all call things and organize things is different from how the public views them, right? And so when we build a website, we try to think from the public perspective, um, and organize it like that. Um, so that if, you know, any of these residents that are here tonight, who are on the website, and then it kind of connects with them what they call it or how they organize it versus. How the government tends to sometimes call things or position things. So as you come through here, if you see different things like that, that's why, um, feel free to ask me questions. I'm just gonna go quickly through each of the main pages, unless there's something specifically from the old website you want to make sure to see what has been done. Um, but this is the landing page, any of these pictures can be switched out, and we encourage them to be switched out, especially like within season, like winter, spring, you know, fall. Um, and it makes it very easy, I did a training earlier with everybody from the town of how to update. Um, so you have your old video tour here, um, you have your town council at links to the department. Um, and then happening in great Waze Borough is, um, your news and notices. So that includes updated news, trust releases, and also your public notices, so we'll get to that page in just a minute. But each of your pages connects from the home screen, but you don't have to connect back to the home screen to get to the other pages, right? So it's, this is kind of like a directory, um, is how this serves. You have Explore Waze Borough, which is for like tourists or visitors, um, or even residents who may not even know what you have, like county, uh, town parks and things like that. Um, so this is kind of a highlight of your news and updates, it will always show the last three updates on the main page. But if you want to view all of them, you can go down here and just hit show more, and it will take you to all of them. Um, and then the stay connected, this is your YouTube right here, so, um, like, once this video loads, people can go to the website and it automatically will update. So as soon as this is loaded to your YouTube channel from tonight's meeting, it will automatically update here, you don't have to go in and do it. It's connected to your YouTube feed, so every time you add a YouTube video, it will add it here. Okay? Um, and then you have your Facebook page as well, where people can scroll from the website versus having to go to Facebook or leave your website.
So nobody has to go into YouTube studio to put in a thing for meetings, so that video.
No, so when you hit load more videos on another screen, it's like your whole feed. So like, this is our meeting right now, that's live right there, um, so if somebody was at home, they could click here from the website and go and watch the live meeting. So this is us right here talking right now.
So it is, it's recorded?
So it is broadcasted.
Yeah, it is broadcasted, yes.
Yeah, I could view it from back there on my mobile. Um, so it's right there. Um, and then this is all your past streams, okay? So anything that y'all post to your YouTube, people can see from the website, it just links to your feed. So it's always updated, you don't have to worry about it being outdated or somebody forgetting to post. Um, and I took that into account with a lot of different things, um, where once the information is put in, it will automatically update your website, so. Sometimes it's hard for people to take a break from their normal duties, go in and update your website. Um, and so I've tried to get usability for the town staff that are responsible for it as part of this as well. Um, so you have these main pages, like you had before, so like, this is town government, and it has a contact list that's easily updated. Um, and then it also talks about the seat for Anson County. Uh, but then, within that, you also have these others, so like finance, employment, town council. Um, and so here's the town council, and then down here you'll see, um, there's also a place for agenda minutes. So if people click on it, and then they can download the agenda minutes. Um, and I went through that with the town clerk today, and it's very easy, she doesn't even have to go up here, go in here to do it, she just uploads the minutes and agenda. To the dashboard for the website, and it automatically populates this page.
I don't think it's state sanctioned or it's funded at all, but, uh, does the planning board broadcast when they have a meeting?
They do not, um, we can make sure that happens, though.
It might be just a good idea, because when we have hearings like this, public hearings.
I agree.
Transparency, people will at least be able to go back and look at it, so that might be something you want to look into, order of adjustments, anything like that, any quasi-town or.
And any channels that you have, so if you have a planning and zoning or a board of adjustments channel, I can add it to their page, and it will do the same thing and load their channel, just like it loads your channel.
That'd be a good idea.
So it's all integrated into the new website, and it makes it automatic.
Yeah, we can do that, absolutely.
Yep. Um, and then departments, so you do have all those sub-departments, but we also did a department directory, so if people just aren't sure, they can go here and click. Uh, but they can also see the dropdown. So any of those you can click on and go to the individual departments. Um, my favorite picture on the police one, so I'm gonna go to that one. Um, because they have the really pretty mural with the police car. Um, but each one has like a, the, the main things that people would go for, so, so they don't have to scroll the page. We put the main things up front, um, like request forms, record requests, or accident requests, and then you have contact information there. Um, and then if they have additional things, so like. Um, I want to say planning and zoning maybe? Um, so here's planning and zoning, so zoning ordinance says permit petition. If they click on that, that goes to other parts of this, so here's powers and duties, violation fees, and then here's all your zoning ordinances. So people can go through here and click on any of those and bring up the document that contains all of those. Okay? Any questions on those?
And so the, uh, agendas, the meeting minutes and all of that will be automatically updated.
There's a place where once she makes the. Once she makes the document, um, and I explained that if you're gonna put them on the website, you put them on like a PDF so people can't alter it, like, they can't download it. I mean, they could if they're sa, I mean, like, I could, but. If they're savvy enough, you can do it regardless, but, um, it's just best practice to do a PDF, um, that people can't, you know, download a doc and, and print it in it like a fax. But once she turns it into a PDF, there's a place where she just uploads it to the site, and then it automatically makes the little box. For it, so she doesn't have to go in and design any elements, the website will do it through a CMS database.
So what happens to all the historical stuff that was on the old website?
Um, so, I mean, those documents can be added here in like an archive section, we didn't do that, but they can be.
Everything, I would suggest that's migrating, I mean.
Yeah, you can make an archive, yeah, it wasn't asked of us, but, um, you can make an archival, archival thing in case somebody wants to do it. Or you can put in a request for it, so, yeah.
We got them to be long.
Yep. Um, and then, um, explore, so this one, of course, is, it's got a video here that you can play. Um, of somebody running along the path, um, and then you have accommodations, art and history, outdoor recreation, and dining, so this is, you know, both for locals and for people that are visiting. So this is all the same information that was there before, it's just organized in a better way that makes it easier to see and click. And all this white space is because of this big TV, okay? On a desktop, iPad, mobile phone, whatever, it would not have all this white space, but you want it kind of center aligned as far as the, uh, content goes on like a desktop or something like that.
Or any, how do the local businesses get connected to this, and is there like advertising opportunities to help defray costs, anything like that, like banners?
Um, I don't suggest doing that on the government side, like, a lot of times, if you want to add something like that, um, we do it like a business directory.
Yeah, when you go back up to dining, and stuff, because the business directory we had was way outdated.
Yeah, you're talking about this one.
Uh, whatever it is.
So if I click on dining, it scrolls down.
Accommodations, yeah.
Yeah, and it has like some listings of, this is directly from yours. Um, but you can do something like, so for example, I'll show you an example of something that you can do.
Yeah, brother.
So, I, I'm just biased because this is my hometown. Like, if you hit shop, brother's return, um, then it has all of the listings here of the businesses. Um, and what we do is we can set up a form that says list your business, and the businesses fill out this form, and once they hit submit, it automatically updates that other page with their business. So it doesn't require any staff hours to keep this updated, it just requires the businesses to go and enter their information.
So if somebody's screening that? Well, if somebody on staff screened up a board from which it's.
Yeah, you can do, i- i- it can default to hidden, and then you can have somebody assigned to make it visible, so when they submit it, it can be submitted hidden, and then once somebody approves it, they can make it visible.
Yeah, for grammar and appropriateness.
Yep, and appropriateness, because they upload pictures, so you never know, yeah.
With all the hackers we've had around, I think that that would be a, a good component to add.
So if that's something that y'all want to add.
Businesses to interact, if we're gonna, if we're gonna showcase the town, showcase the town.
Yes. And, and, and a lot of times, you know, i- individual towns do this, or it's done through tourism. Um, but it's also, I think, beneficial, especially I've heard somebody talk about business recruitment, so when you're looking to recruit businesses, having a business resources page. Where you have like doing business in Waze Borough, and things like that are beneficial in what companies look for when they're coming to recruit, so. Um, so that's something, but that's the great thing about the website now, this website can grow and expand to accommodate whatever you decide you want to do. Okay? So you can build on it, um, economic development just goes to economic development page. Um, news and notices, so this is where all of your news and notices are, so you have public notices that are a little bit different, and then you have news here. Um, and again, that just goes to what we call a CMS database, so they don't actually have to go into the site, this is already predetermined, so it keeps everything looking consistent. Um, and when they put in the information, it automatically updates this page. Okay? Any questions? All right?
Thank you.
Here, welcome.
So, Mayor, Member Council, we, um, we embarked on a new personal policy, a personal policy for town Waze Borough that's not been updated since nineteen ninety-six. So we partnered with the League and the Map Group, to do our study, um, this is the finding of, of the, uh, of the.
Counsel, we had a lot of this, I was putting up a lot of this, putting new packets, so if you repeat your package, it will speed your package.
Okay, good evening, um, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Erica Phillips, and I'm with the Map Group, and we, um, we do work with legal municipalities. Um, I have been with the Map Group for about eight years, um, full-time for the last four years. Um, and we do work only with public employers and only in the state of North Carolina, so we do most of our work with municipalities, counties, libraries, water districts, um, tours and ports. And we provide a variety of HR services, depending on what the organization is asking of us. Most of what we do are class and pay studies, um, and personal policy updates, but we'll also do supervisory training, assessment centers. We can fill in if an organization has a vacancy, human resources, and they need us to do that. Um, but for Waze Borough, we, um, were asked to come and do a classification and pay study, and then update the personal policy as well. Um, just a snapshot of some of the clients that we've worked with, we only work with organizations that have less than four hundred employees, just because of the size of our organization. And there's other companies out there that we work with, a lot of larger cities and counties. So I've worked with organizations all across the state of North Carolina, literally North and Manio, and, um, um, some have had two or three employees and some up to around four hundred employees, so. Um, and again, we work with nonprofits as well, and the Outer Banks, the Zeroh Hero, the Dunn House and Authority, so if you're a public employer in North Carolina, we can do HR work for you. So what we did for Waze Borough was, um, we call them a classification and compensation study, but for short, I just call it a class and pay study. And that's where we come in, and we look at all the positions that the, um, city or the town currently has now, we look at the job titles for those positions, and then what the compensation is and what the pay range is for those positions. So we look at what your current pay plan is, and then, um, we take those positions and we compare them to the market. So what we do, what we call external pay equity, so we want to see where is Waze Borough in the market, are you in line with the market? Are you above the market, below the market, and some of your positions are all your positions. We also look at the positions and compare them to each other, and that's why we call that internal pay equity, and that helps us when we put together a new pay plan, updated pay plan. So we try to put positions that are somewhere comparable in levels of responsibility and complexity in similar salary grades. Um, again, we look at the personal policy and any kind of pay practices that you might have now, we'll make recommendations on updated pay practices if we feel like it's something that you might want to consider. And then we'll write on the job options as well, and so that's helpful when you want to write, um, job advertisements and, you know, doing interviews for applicants.
So, Ma'am, on the, the third point there, analyzing external competitiveness, pay relationships with la- labor market competitors, are you looking at NCDOL, National DOL? What, what are you looking at with the, of the labor market?
Yeah, so we talked to the organization about what they consider to be the market, so, um, and I'll show you a list of who we included in the market survey. So typically, we'll look at other municipalities, other counties, um, there are normally going to be other organizations that are within like a commutable distance, which we usually consider to be about an hour, because a lot of employees might be willing to commute about an hour. Organizations that provide similar services to what Waze Borough has as well, so, um, so I'll show you a list of who we included in that market. So the primary goals of the study is to basically update your pay plan, so you can make sure your pay plan is competitive in the market, so it allows you to recruit employees when you have vacancies, which you obviously haven't been doing that. To retain the employees that you have, obviously employees need for other reasons other than just pay, but you don't want pay to be the only reason that you might have someone jump into another organization. And then to motivate the employees that you have, um, employees appreciate when they know that the organization cares about their pay, is, and want to make sure that their pay is competitive. So why do a classification study? There's a lot of reasons why you might want to periodically look at your pay plan, sometimes you can do that within the organization, you may have staff be able to do that. But a lot of times it's good to have an outside, third party come in, neutral party to take a look at the pay plan. Um, but every couple of years you want to look at your positions, because jobs do change over time for a lot of different reasons. So you might have new technology, just depending how you have a new website, that's going to change maybe how some employees to perform some of their job duties. Um, you might have new financial software that's going to change maybe the way you're doing your accounts payable, some of your permitting, um, things in finance, so technology can change some positions. Maybe you have new services that you're offering, for example, in a parks and recreation, maybe you started offering some new senior programs, and employee maybe took on, um, all the work for programming those. Those new programs that you're offering to the community, and maybe time to take a look at the position and see if that warranted a job title change or salary grade change. Um, there may also be just shifts in duties over time for a lot of different reasons, so you might have a department head, any department that come in, maybe they'll look at the organization or the department, and maybe shifting some duties over time, and that may change some positions. Again, warranty, possibly a job title change or maybe salary grade change if there's enough changes in duties there. Um, the market and industry changes is another good reason why you want to periodically look at your pay plan, sometimes the market changes for all the positions, so right after COVID, we were seeing, um, cost of living increases anywhere from eight to ten percent where I live, in the Triangle area. But other times it might just be certain positions, and that are being impacted by the market, so the last few years, we've seen issues with law enforcement, trying to recruit law enforcement, people are leaving law enforcement, so we're trying to come up with competitive ways to, um, recruit new applicants into that field. But also make sure that the pay is competitive, so that you can get some applicants in and keep up within the city of the town. Um, we look at equal pay for equal work, we also look at legal compliance, so the digging area. So the big thing there is the Fairness Standards Act. So based on the job duties of a physician, we'll make recommendations if it should be exempt or not exempt in your pay plan. And when we put together a new pay plan, we'll indicate that in the pay plan. So there's a lot of reasons why you want to periodically look at your pay plan. These are just a couple of things that we share with the employees so that they know when we're doing a study, in addition to meeting with them and telling them what is the study about. These are the things we want to make sure they know. A lot of times, I mention these because I've had employees ask me these kinds of questions in the past. So we do tell employees that paying pieces or job classifications are not guaranteed. A lot of times, we go into an organization and find out the positions are classified exactly the way they should be. And maybe the pay is really where it needs to be in the market. So we don't come in and make a possible recommendations on pay only when there is a need based on the market or internal equity, we make some recommendations on that. We do tell the employees that we never recommend any paid pieces of leases. And I think sometimes employees get concerned about that when we're coming in. And we recommend any kind of reorganization in the department or any paid pieces. If we find, and I think it's only happened once or twice, that there was a position I studied where for whatever reason, the employee had lost a lot of job duties over time. So we did recommend a decrease in the salary grade, but we would never recommend a decrease in an individual employee's salary. Because there's a way to leave their salary where it is and allow the agency to catch up with the employee over time. We also tell the employees that everything that we put together in the study is a recommendation to management and the council. Obviously, you all will be approving anything ultimately. We also share with them that when we do a class and pay study, we don't ask questions about how well do they like working for the organization? Or how well do they like working for their supervisor? How well do they like their coworkers? We are not coming in and asking those kinds of questions. We won't know those kinds of things. We're not talking to supervisors about individual employee job performance. Again, we won't know those kinds of things. And we're not recommending any kind of reorganization or doing any kind of staffing study in that department. So we just want to make sure the employees know we're truly studying the positions and then the pay that corresponds with the position, so not the individual employees. So what other steps in a class and pay study? What have we been doing over the last few months? The first is an organization reaching out. They identify a need to do a study, and I always like to talk to them about why. Sometimes they might have issues with recruiting and they have a lot of vacancies. Maybe they know that their pay plan's out of line in the market, or they know it's been several years since they've studied their pay plan, so they want to make sure they're in line with the market. So there's a lot of different reasons. So we talk to them about why. Then we come back to the organization. We do employee orientation meetings, which we did out about two months ago. We want employees to have an opportunity to know what a class and pay study is, what the deliverables are going to be at the end of the study, and what we're going to be asking of them to do as part of the study. We ask the employees to fill out what we call Position Description Questionnaires. And that's where they tell us in their own words what they do on a daily basis. So what are their primary duties? Where do they spend the majority of the time? What kind of equipment do they use? If they supervise, where are they supervising? What is the primary purpose of their job? What are some of the physical requirements of their job? So the employees fill that out. There's a separate page for the supervisor to fill that out as well, because we like to get from the supervisor in regards to those positions. Then we have an opportunity to review those questionnaires when we come back to do the employee interviews. So we meet with not necessarily every employee, but at least one or two employees in every job classification. So they kind of represent all the other employees. And we want to make sure we know exactly what they're doing and get that information from the questionnaire and the interviews. At the same time, we're working on the salary survey, on the market survey. Then we have all that information and we do analysis on our end. We do a draft report, and then we'll do a final report. Then we will write the job descriptions, which we also call classifications, and do a personal policy update, which we've done that already. I still do have to get the job descriptions to you all. I just want to mention, when I talk about that analysis that we're doing on our end, this is what we call classification factors in human resources. So these are items that we look at in regards to every position. And then we compare the positions to each other when we do that internally based on these different job classification factors. So for example, we're looking at what kind of education might be required to do the job. Is there some education that would be like minimum requirements? Or is it the kind of position that somebody can come in without some kind of education? Similar for experience. Is it the kind of job where you can bring somebody in, you can train them how to do that? Or do they really need to have some kind of experience? What's the variety of work that they do in the organization? Some positions might be responsible for two or three primary functions throughout the day. Others may have 10 different things that they're doing throughout the day. And of that variety of the work, how difficult is it? How complex is it to do? Are there a lot of steps? Is it difficult to learn? What kind of problem solving do they have on the job? So every position, no matter what it is, in any organization, has problems that you have to solve. So maybe it's time to get a piece of equipment fixed. Maybe it's working on a water line and trying to repair a leak. Maybe it's working with a citizen on a bill. So what are typical problems in your role that you might have to solve? Independence of action, so how independent are you? Are you primarily working by yourself throughout the day? Or maybe you're in a position where you have your crew leader alongside you in the right ear in case you have any questions, and said it's time to move on to the next job. So how independent are you in your daily work? Responsibility for resources. Resources can be other staffs. So if you're supervising, you might be responsible for making sure that you're doing the work safely and effectively. It could be financial resources, if you have a credit card, lines in the budgets. It could be facilities, different kinds of equipment. So in your daily role, what kind of resources are you responsible for? What does that look like? Contact with others, that can be internal to the other, into the town. Or it could be the public. So what kind of external public contact do you have? And what are you doing with that public contact? Again, if you supervise, consequences of error. We're all humans, so we all make mistakes. Most of the mistakes I make in the role I have now are going to be typographical errors. So I don't have a lot of risk exposure to my organization. But depending on the kind of work you do, if you make a mistake, you might add more risk exposure to the town. So if you have errors on the job, you know, what kind of risk exposure do you have? And then overall working conditions. So what are the hazards of the work that you're doing? What's the working environment like? Are you in an office? Are you out in the field? Are you working around moving cars and vehicles? So we look at all of these classification factors for each position. And then again, we kind of compare them. And that kind of helps us group them in similar salary grades. We always tell the employees, these are not classification factors. So just volume of work, the fact that you're really busy in a job, doesn't necessarily change what the classification of the position would be. That may be more indicative, or maybe you need more staff to do that same kind of job. And employees' length of service. So anywhere I go, in local government, you'll have employees that have been in the same organization, sometimes in the same position, 20, sometimes 30, 30-plus years. So, which is wonderful. And they need to have a lot of that job knowledge or knowledge of that organization, but it doesn't change that classification factor. So if that employee leaves or retires and you bring in a new employee, they're going to be doing similar duties or after two or three years, hopefully similar duties. So we do look at length of service when we do what we call implementation options. But it doesn't impact the classification of the job.
Let me come back just a second. Because when we're looking at comparing market study comparable organizations, when you're looking at consequences of error job decisions, are you looking at comparable organizations? Are you also taking into account data from like the NC Industrial Commission, workers' comp, that type of thing? What might be a flank of exposure for a particular position?
I wouldn't say we don't get that detail in that we say of those individual classification factors, taking what is the consequence of error for a police officer in this organization versus the industrial commission or something? We may say in general, those are more almost internal factors. So there are certain positions that have more consequences of error. If you're working in a Waguesboro treatment plan, if you're operating equipment around moving vehicles in the street versus if I'm working at my desk in a city center, citizen's in a utility building. So there's more consequences of error for one than the other. So it's kind of looking at them more internally. So more so than externally to the market. The market's more what are these other organizations paying for similar kinds of positions? Is really what we look at.
Responsibility for resources. When looking at that, and you say you find a position that is in financial capacity, and they're not bonded in that position, is that a recommendation that they would be? That they're handling fiduciary?
No, we don't normally make those kinds of recommendations, no.
Okay. And?
Employee qualification. So this is if individual employees have qualifications that are either above, beyond what the minimum requirements are, or maybe not relevant to the position. And then employee work, work on that. So obviously, there are any organizations that have been in the working world. You know that there's some towns' employees that are not performing their work well, are not doing all the job duties that are required of the position. And that's important, but that's more performance management issue that you want to deal with on that end. You still want the position to be classified the way you need it to be so that you can recruit if you need to. So we do on that internal equity. Then at the same time, we're doing that external equity. And basically, that's through the salary survey, market survey. So as kind of mentioned earlier, you want to have a variety of organizations in your market study or salary study. You'd like to include a little bit of all of these. So comparable organizations, again, comparable in size, comparable in the markets, similar size sometimes if you can, sometimes you're not able to get similar size. Organizations that you know you might be using employees to, or you're recruiting employees from. And then typically, within a commutable distance. So those are some of the things that we look at in regards to including organizations in a market survey or salary survey. So these are the organizations that we included in the salary survey. There are some that you're not able to get salary data from. One of the organizations doesn't have a pay plan now at all. And I did ask them how they go about recruiting and determining salary. And the League of Municipalities puts together a salary survey. And they said they'll just try to look to see what other organizations have similar sizes or paying those positions and try to find a good salary based on that, so. So we included the county where we could. There's some positions that are somewhat similar, a lot of them are not. And then we put together what we call the salary, the salary survey. This is not the town of Waguesboro. This is a sample, so you can see what one looks like. We would have all the organizations to the left. It's basically an Excel spreadsheet with all the positions that you currently have. And then we'll have what all those organizations, the minimum and the maximum are, where you are now with your minimum and maximum, and then where we recommend you be. And I have handouts here, so I will show you your salary survey. Once we have all the internal equity, the external equity, we then are able to look at job value. What we mean by that is what salary grade a position should be in, in your pay plan. This is a sample pay plan, so this is not Waguesboro's. But generally, what you're going to see in a pay plan is salary grades. And then each salary grade has a salary range. Usually, it's a minimum and a maximum. Some organizations do hiring rates, where you bring them in a little bit lower, and then after probation, you move them to the minimum. Some organizations have steps in the salary grades. But typically, what you want to see is the salary grades, as they increase, those positions are more, have more, you know, more complexity involved, maybe more education required to do that work, more risk exposure to the organization. So all those kind of factors that we're looking at, hopefully you're going to see those increase. And then you want to see positions, say, for example, in this slide, salary grade 18. Hopefully, those positions that are listed there, which is like a recreation crew leader, maintenance crew leader, administrative specialist, are somewhat similar in those classification factors. So somewhat similar in flexibility, variety of work, responsibility, and also in line with the market, the market data that you're working with. So you're kind of looking at both. Typically, what you want to see as well is your new hires closer to the beginning of the salary range. If you have new hires close to the beginning, and then you also have employees that have been here five, six, seven, eight years close to the beginning as well, you might have a comp compression. So you have a compression of salaries. So employees that haven't been here very long making a similar amount to employees that have been here a long time. And that's a red alert. So we try to look where there's compression issues and try to make some recommendations for that. So we did, I'm going to pass this down. We did put together a new updated pay plan for you. And then you'll have it, these handouts in here, and I put them in a binder just to make it easy. So we developed a new pay plan. And then we put grade assignments in here, so we have new salary grades. The positions are in the salary grades. And then we have implementation options as well. So if you pull out, if you look in there, at the beginning of that binder, you're going to see the first few pages, like one through six, there's just going to be information about the study in general, just the study process. A lot of what I just went through to finding some of those classification factors as well. So a lot of that's just information about this study. Beyond that, pages 10 through 18 is what we call a summary narrative. So that's going to be a small paragraph about each position. Then we'll somewhere, somewhere, the job description is going to be about two pages long, two or three, depending on the position. So it's just a brief little bridge about the position and what salary grade that we recommend you. If you go to page eight, you'll see a list of the implementation options. So what that means is, we have an updated pay plan. If you decide to approve that updated pay plan, where do you put employees on this new pay plan? You don't just need to put right at the minimum of the range. So there's a lot of different options we can look at. So we bring in about five different options. So you'll see, for example, you might take into consideration how long an employee has been with the town of Waguesboro. So for example, maybe say, maybe they've been here one, five years, and you move them 1% for every year. So five, 5% into that range. So some kind of formula to help you to determine where we're going to put employees on this new pay plan. So we can look at how long they've been with the town, how long they've been in their position, a blend of both of those options. We could look at different percentages. So a lot of times, we talk to the organization about what can they afford? Where do they want to be in the market? So we made different calls to implementation options there. Page nine has some suggested pay practices. A lot of those are going to be included in the personal policy update. After that blue page, you're going to see the salary survey. That's about six pages long. So that's going to be the salary survey for Waguesboro. So you'll see the positions that you have now, what the market looks like. And then on the bottom, it'll show you where you are now and where you recommend that you place yourself in the market. Beyond that salary survey, you'll see the suggested salary circle. What that is, it's just a one-page document that lists the salary grades with salary ranges. And after that will be the suggested pay plan. So it's similar to the salary study. It's going to have the salary grades and then the positions that go in each salary grade with the salary range. And so the range was based on the market data as well as comparing the positions internally to each other. Beyond that, we also updated the personal policy. I know you all have seen it. It's a lot to read and go over, but it is important to periodically look at personal policy. We're doing a lot of work for the League right now because they started a new grant program where organizations, if they update their personal policy, they're going to pay 50% of that. And just because they're trying to get organizations to have really old policies, to get them updated. So the personal policy, just in general, I updated the entire policy, just made it more moderate. A couple of benefit updates I wanted to mention. And obviously, these are just recommendations to you. But we did add GNT to the holiday schedule. We did update the vacation leave accrual to be more competitive in the market. In addition to having your pay competitive, you want to have your benefits competitive as well. Because a lot of times, if you have employees that are looking in the market of organizations, they're going to look at what is your vacation accrual like, where is something you have to defer to offer? We did change the Christmas holiday to, we've left the safe schedule. So really, what that means is a free, weekly basis every year, rather than some years might be 10 days, some that might be longer. We did update the area health insurance coverage as well. A couple of the things in pay and leave policies. We updated holiday pay, leave without pay, leave without absence, military leave with comp time. We did, and we have had meetings with Warily and Debbie about these things. We suggest that you accrue comp time before overtime pay, just to keep those expenses down. And then if employees have comp time, that they have to use the comp time before they move occasionally so you get that comp time off the books. Just kind of good practice to not have long, because you have to pay it out when you need. Conditions of employment, we added several new sections. There's a new technology policy out there. So any kind of new policy that, it's good to have in your personal policy, we included. Different kinds of conditions of employment will be adverse weather, the Pump Act, checking driver's license periodically. We updated the entire disciplinary section, give the town a little bit more flexibility with how they handle discipline if they need to. We also did a new employment application for the town. So we did kind of a paper version and also a fillable version. I don't know if it'd be nice to have that one at all. So applicants can find it, just fill it out online, and then they can email it, bring it by, mail it in. How would they want to do that? So. And also, the deliverables I still have love to do are job descriptions for each position. About halfway done with that. And education incentive pay plan, or that certification pay plan. And then dropping the conditional offer letter for Debbie to use for new hires that are kind of indicating things that are reported on there, like the fact that she may acquire some time over overtime pay and things like that. So that's just a highlight. There's a lot of other changes in there. So there is one page, like a one-page document in the back that will list like some. So there is one page, like a one-page document in the back that will list like some further major changes that we just wanted to highlight up for you upon. So I know that's a lot to look at, and you have a lot more on your agenda today. So I'm happy to come back to another meeting or if you'll have any questions.
Is this our, the key?
Yes, that's yours, that's yours. And I can email anything as well if you'd like to have it in the, in the conference. Do you have any questions? Just that was really quick, but I feel, I feel bad because it's a lot of information, so. So the big thing is, hopefully not be able to take a look at the pay plan. And I'm sure Wile will talk to you about hopefully approving the pay plan, you know, and then the personal policy as well. I think they're really looking at ideally a January one implementation date. But I'm able and willing to come back from another meeting.
The report may change, person may change, so we need to update the new members.
Okay.
We need you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Down here at Old Business, B, excess NC DOT road level project along US seventy-four.
We got a representative from DOT here.
Well, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Donald Brid, Representative, Joint Department of Homeland Protection. And it's been a while since we talked about the proposed construction project on US seventy-four through Waysborough, basically around Grand Street to Alton Road. We kind of, we recognize that they, we call it access management project. You know, we propose to construct median along US seventy-four. The large part of that corridor is, or majority of that corridor is a five-lane section, two eastbound, two westbound, with the center turn, two eight, center turn lane. So we propose to utilize that center turn lane for the concrete median. But the project, you know, the project length is two point nine miles. We would modify the existing five-lane undivided roadway to a four-lane divided with a raised median, like I said, from Grand Street to Alton Pond. We would have you to involve the greatest locations throughout the corridor for eastbound and westbound traffic. That would include the corresponding left turn lanes for that left turn pocket to get the left turning and U-turning folks out of the through lane, so we're not impeding traffic that way.
What kind of study will be done to vehicle storage in those left-hand turning lanes? You know, higher, higher volume versus lesser volume.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's already been done. Those traffic analysis, those traffic studies have already been done to determine what those queue lengths would need to be for those left turn lanes. And they will vary in length based on where you are within the corridor of the traffic. So we proved, we will prove radius, radius is at Park Road and at a new traffic signal at that Park Road intersection, which as it stands today, the signal is located at the Family Dollar and the lawyer office is right there on US seventy-four. We're proposing to pull that signal away from that intersection because it's not really an intersection. It's kind of an eye spot for a traffic signal. We would pull that back to the intersection of Park and US seventy-four, signalize that. No one, we still need to provide access to the, what's it called, plank? The plank, the shopping center where the Family Dollar is. So there's two access points there along US seventy-four. One is the western side of the parking lot, the eastern side of the parking lot. Since the traffic signal is being pulled away from where it is currently, we would take and, and we're going to construct a left turn lane to the eastern entrance to that shopping center, so we can still get folks into that shopping center. But also get a little bit of space away from the traffic signal so that the turn lane and the traffic signal aren't competing for that same space. Connect, propose to connect US fifty-two to Holly Street right here. So we're fifty-two south, you know, if you can envision pushing straight through, that's kind of splitting the store and the hotel right there.
You can like, too.
That's the proposal, but what we're, what we're really working on, that was the proposal with the initial concept. Okay, how about that? We'll put it that way.
Initially, yeah.
Yeah, so, and we listened, because during the public meeting back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there was definitely some passionate discussion about that particular connection. So we're definitely listening to that. So with that, we are exploring other options, other solutions to minimize potential right-of-way impacts and potentially have that same access, but do it on, as you know, Holly Street has a, it goes from seventy-four back to seventy-four, basically, right? So we would propose, the solutions that we're working on are going to try to accommodate that same access to Holly Street. Because you have large vehicles at the end of this truck, car wash, or a truck wash and a truck repair. So we would offer, we're proposing and trying to find solutions to that and make access points on either end of Holly to accommodate those trucks versus pushing that access straight through from fifty-two.
You're going to need it because kids, the families that stay there, the homeless families that stay there, that school bus runs right behind that park.
Absolutely.
Runs right behind you, so we've got to be mindful of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, that's.
And that's a, in, in, in all honesty, with, to push that connection through that we proposed in the initial concept, it's tight. I mean, it is tight and it's, it's, it consumes area that really is.
It's not conducive.
It's not, well, it's not conducive to what the community wants either, and, and so our solution is to, we're trying to create access points on either end that accommodate those same vehicles that if a truck wants to leave and go eastbound, there's an, there's a safe maneuver for that to happen. And it's an adequate maneuver. It's not, uh, the, the radiuses are improved to accommodate a tractor-trailer truck. So we're not trying to put a tractor-trailer truck where only passenger cars can fit and that, that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, the school bus can still need to turn or whatever.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's my, those kids have, we say, doing it.
Yes, sir.
Top priority, those children. Catch the bus right there.
Yes, sir.
And then we have the parking lot, and the adults are out in the parking lot of that hotel. And give them a right, a turning radius for those A three movers coming in and out of there so that they don't make a bloody mess out of any of the meat.
Correct. And that's why we're exploring those options on either end to make that access work without trying to punch that through there. Because plus there's, there's about an eight-foot grade change between seventy-four and Holly Street right there. So that makes things get wider. As we get taller, things get wider. And so we're very aware of that and trying to make things work on either end. And if we can make it work for the tractor trailer, it will work for that school bus.
Yeah, there's too many, um, trucks going down through Holly Street. We usually go to pay for the Dollar General store.
They go straight down. They go from the truck stop and take the right or the left. They don't go up.
To Holly and Warden on that end, or?
You know where the Dollar General is?
Yes.
Truck stops right there.
Yes.
So they'll come out from the truck stop, straight down.
Yes.
They even take the left on the seventy-four or the right.
Yes, sir.
They don't go up. I've never seen them accomplish it.
Okay.
I haven't.
Right.
In, in the, uh, school bus does go.
Right. So the access point on that western side of Holly would be critical for that.
Yes.
And that's why these options are being explored.
Yes.
Try to make that connection possible, so. But duly noted on all fronts. So as I stated, we had, back in twenty eighteen, you know, we had a local officials meeting, a couple of input meetings, and that's where a lot of this information came from that we heard. Nineteen, we had stakeholder meetings with area businesses to hear what their, you know, what their concerns were with the proposal. Unfortunately, twenty nineteen, the project was suspended due to funding. We, the lack of funding, just, uh, the project didn't, didn't have traction any longer. But twenty, late twenty-three, the project was approved to restart. So through this process, then you can get that going. So through the STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Pro, process, it was awarded funding and it's a viable project and we're now in design. And that's, you know, part of what led me here today was we have environmental concern, you know, things that we need to be sensitive of, environmental features within the corridor. So we sent out here some folks' boots on the ground to try to get some of that located and included in our survey. We sent letters out to let the public know that we were coming. So if you see somebody, you know, I know if I see somebody walking on my land, I'm going to question what are you doing? I don't know what you're doing here. So we present that information up front so that we, so folks know that we're coming. Then we had this, uh, we were reached out to by Hanson County. Wanted to have some more current information since it had been so long. So that's why I reached out to Mr. Ross to see if we could present it to you guys too, because we know it's been a while since updated information has been provided for you. There is a project website that provides updated information. I'm going to leave this with you. And I also have a, a thumb drive with a presentation on it with the same information so that you can share it with, with your council.
Put that on the website, I know, so people have questions. Is this preparatory to the bypass? How is this going to affect that?
I know, sir, they are standalone projects of their own.
Okay.
With or without the bypass, this project is viable based on safety concerns. So even if you had a full Waysborough bypass from east, from west to east, east to west, however you want to travel, this project would merit steel because of the access management needs within the corridor. So currently you've got, you know, as we, as current as in late twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty to twenty-eight thousand vehicles per day at any point in time. Now, we know you have peak volumes that exceed that in certain seasons, but on a daily basis, the average is that number. And in our design year, which is twenty forty-five, which we're trying to design to accommodate, of course, those numbers grow. They could be up to almost thirty-seven thousand vehicles per day. And God can understand your peak is different than that, but when you average that across every day throughout the year, that vehicle per day is about thirty-seven thousand. But as those in, uh, volumes increase, the access management becomes more important. Because conflict, it reduces conflict points from the side streets and all these driveways. Along the corridor, you have driveway, 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 side street, driveway, driveway. All of these movements can be made at the same time and they're all trying to get out to that certain. You're either going to go right and go the direction you're going to go, or you're going to go across those two lanes into that center lane and try to queue up to go the opposite direction. So the access management is going to give you specific left turn and U-turn points along the corridor and areas of queue up, like you were asking about, so that we have, those movements are safer and we don't have all that happening, one right after the other, right after the other, as we travel the corridor east or west.
It would give us the move of cycle, uh, single cycles and moves the traffic more efficiently. It's clear what you're saying, and it seems to work in Indian, I don't know, except for there in the Walmart intersection.
The, there is, there is a small benefit to improve mobility. It's not the intent of access management, it's just kind of a side benefit of it. But as you know, US seventy-four is a national truck network, okay?
Absolutely.
There's a lot of freight that comes through on US seventy-four. So.
Safety mountains.
There's a, there's a safety stuff.
I'm trying to figure out, are you trying to divert traffic off of Sabre Street onto another street? Or whether outside of Holly Street? Is it somewhere else, a point you're trying to take another road?
No, no, no. What we're doing is just making it where instead of folks coming out from a convenience store or a restaurant or whatever the case may be into seventy-four, we'll give them a dedicated place to make a, if you're not going, if you're going right, it's easy. You just get out of traffic and you, when you have a safe place and you go to the right. If you need to go left, you have to cross three lanes. Two lanes that you don't want to travel in, the center turn lane, and then get to the lanes going the direction you want to go. So we're offering dedicated places for that to take place. Queue traffic up or, or get traffic in line to where, when you go to make that move, they're not all sitting in that two-way center turn lane. And it doesn't impede the through traffic and it, and it has a, those are safer moves than having folks be able to just arbitrarily at any point make that same move. When I say.
Come across straight. Straight, go across those two lanes and hop over and get in that other one.
Correct. Because see, you could do that at any point along the corridor right now. And when you have, when you have that happening, multiple vehicles at the same time, those conflicts, the potential conflict points increase exponentially just like that. So we're trying to give a place where that maneuver takes place safely. Because from Lylesville to Polkton, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, said it backwards, but from Polkton to Lylesville, uh, because we stay east to west on highways, but, um, there's eight hundred and forty-one crashes in the last, in a five-year study that was done. The study was completed in twenty, the window of the study was twenty twenty-three. So twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, eight hundred and forty-one crashes in that corridor from Polkton to Lylesville. Of that, eight hundred and forty-one, four hundred and ten crashes were within the project limits of this project. Primarily side swipes and angle collisions. The conflict points were top.
So you have, so what happened, do you have deaths, everything with that report? How many deaths?
I don't have that breakdown here, but if you like, I do have that report where I can determine the fatalities, the serious, A, B, C, all that order.
Just for knowledge.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. When I, I will take that and I will note that and I'll try to get that and email it back to you guys, no problem. But four hundred and ten crashes within that cor, within this project corridor is, is accounting for half of those crashes from Polkton to Lylesville. So that's, that's significant. And we, you know, our, our proposal should benefit that or should improve that greatly. I really don't have any more to offer about the project itself, other than I can, you know, I'm going to leave this with you. I'll provide it to you and the thumb drive, it's got the presentation. My contact information is in here. I'm the project manager, project engineer for the project, and I'm happy to talk with you about it at any point in time. We've, Mr. Ross and I have had a couple of discussions, so emailing on phone. It's a, it's a function, it's a funded viable project. And so when I say that, that means if the fund are committed to it and even if, you know, well, I can't say even if. It's a funded viable project, project is committed through the STIP. So therefore nothing should get in its way as far as lack of funding and have a policy. So just it's been a while since we had spoken to anybody. I know the council changes over time, and we just wanted to get back in front of you guys and, and offer a current update.
Can you add one question, because I know you mentioned, is the bypass, does it still have funding?
So the bypass is in two parts. It's an A part, an A section and a B section. The B section, which is fifty-two east back to seventy-four, is funded for preliminary engineering only. So it has no funds for right-of-way acquisition or construction at this point. The section from Polkton on that end back to fifty-two is not funded in any fashion at this point.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. I appreciate your time and I.
Thank you for that, thank you. All right, new business. New business, consider approval of resolution for rezoning request for the two portions of land to large common the site to rezone R twenty to R six for building additional duplexes.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
B, consider approval for resolution, rezoning request properly located, D side, D side of Chest, Chestiero across from ninety-eight to be rezoned to general business, develop a retail store.
Make a motion to table that.
Table it, I think you did it until you talked to the Dollar General representatives. Yeah, table it.
All right. Move the table, all in favor of table it?
Aye.
Table it. So if possible, probably Hollywood, but if possible, get them to the table. DG through town manager, if that's possible. They won't say, we weren't attacking you, sir, okay? We were not, we were not attacking you. No, no, we were not. We was just for our citizens and all of that. C, consider approval of project budget ordinance, C, D, V, G, nineteen. C, consider approval of project budget ordinance, CDVG nineteen, uh, forty-two oh seven and the five and seventy-five thousand. Twenty-four, one, four, two, oh, seven, and the number two, four, nine, twenty-five.
Is that two point, is that two million nine hundred?
Yes.
It's a three million dollar grant for the water construction grant. It's an ordinance that has to be approved.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're patient. Consider approval budget name is to general fund for the following amendment, additional water sewer reimbursement costs, police salaries, fire truck funding, leak truck repair, additional capital access sales and covering mandatory costs.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider approval of budget amendment for the water sewer fund following.
This is cut off from that.
It's at the second page, if you're considering the approval of the budget.
Amendment for water sewer for leaks and uneven building, more expected interest revenue in our.
Investment accounts.
Decrease the expected water sewer revenue and covering mandatory costs.
So is there an H in H?
We got.
There's no H in H.
Yeah, so, okay. So the, uh, the water sewer, we need a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the water sewer fund balance. The amendment covers adjustment to the water purposes for leaks, uneven building, increasing our expected interest for revenue on our investment accounts, lowering our expected water and sewer revenue to make it closer to actual. Uh, moving sewer funds, uh, to pay, um, mandatory costs that come up, uh, periodically and balancing the budget after the entries. That's for the water amendment.
The only thing I see is just a housekeeping thing, this I on the other side of it. It was meant to be A just for future reference or confusion. This is gonna be uploaded on the, uh, website for, uh, the constituency to view. Because it does go from E, it says consider approval. And then you flip the tape, uh, paper over and I'm wondering where A through H is. So in the entrance of, uh, interest of just transparency and good housekeeping, I think that, uh, before we, we should maybe make a motion to, uh, revise the agenda to make that, uh, revision, if that's what we need to do. Okay.
All right, we need a motion, we need something on.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the, uh, uh, approval. Yeah, we just need to.
All in favor?
Aye, to make that, uh, check motion. Thank you.
All right, town staff reports.
Mayor, council, thank you all. I think we speak tonight. Uh, wanna give you guys a, a brief update on the, uh, city park, the splash pad. Um, that issue has been resolved with a little leak, um, that we have, uh, had since it opened. Um, that issue is one percent resolved. It was in the drain lines, so there's four drains in the middle of that pad. Um, and all of our water runoff runs into those and then it runs back into the holding tank. So we're recycling as much water as we possibly can. The issue was they were not sealed up properly and that caused us to lose a hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons of water over the course of its operational period this year. Um, you guys know a bunch of ups and downs with it, um, with it being you find an issue, so on and so forth. So that issue has been resolved. Um, Friday, I did get confirmation from Great Southern Recreation that they're gonna come back out. Um, if you, if you all notice, behind the splash pad where the, the, uh, green holding tank is, it's in the ground, there's still a bunch of dirt and stuff piled up. They're gonna come back, they're gonna fix all that, they're gonna resaw it. Uh, and once all that is, is up to our standards and our acceptance, um, then Mr. Ross, uh, will initiate the payment for what we owe them. And that's only to when we're satisfied. So we, we kinda held that there until that project is one hundred percent done. Um, and then once we have that resolved, then we'll put up a fence, um, that has already been approved and purchased, uh, just around the, uh, splash pad, that way we can kinda take care of our investment. Uh, so that's a little update there. Um, additionally, we've got the civitan park, which seems to have started taking a lot of, uh, interest. Um, so we've, we're working on some improvements there. If you guys have anything, I, I would love to, um, get those ideas from you. If you were to pass them to Mr. Ross and pass them on to us, uh, since we're coming, you can see a lot more input, but you than the civitan park. Jumping over to the fire department side of things, um, October is our biggest busiest month. Now, that's fast to do the fire prevention. Um, so what you have in, in front of you, um, with some green and yellow and some weird colors, um, is a journal report of all the fire prevention programs that we've done. Um, to date, from October first to October thirty-first, we've seen, uh, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one, uh, patrons. That's kids, adults, you can see the breakdown there. Um, that's several of our community events that we host every year, so on and so forth. So, uh, our fire prevention efforts do a long way. Um, and you can see our, our call volume has dropped just a little bit this month due to those efforts. Um, we've also installed, uh, seven smoke alarms, uh, in homes. We are currently out of smoke alarms, Red Cross is supposed to be here this week to deliver some water and then we'll write back to the local cycle and put them up, just type them in and so on and so forth. Uh, if you recall, a couple of months back, um, I let you all know that we had seven new car seat technicians, um, get certified here at fire department and one of them was at the police department. Um, to date, we have installed sixteen car seats and, you know, patients as vehicles. And believe it or not, you, you would, it's, it's hard to fathom how some people put these car seats in. Um, but knowing that they could come here or come to the police department, uh, to get those seats checked and make sure they're installed correctly, it is one of our biggest goals to make sure all of our citizens are, you know, protected and taken well cared of. So that's just a little update. If you guys have any questions or anything, I'll ask.
What about the, uh, update on, uh? Scene vector.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry about that. So we went out to, um, Colorado last week to do the final inspection on that fire drop, everything is, is just a week old. Um, it is expected to be shipped out sometime this week, no later than Friday. Once it is shipped out, um, a private transfer company brings it from Colorado to North Carolina. It'll stop at the dealer in North Carolina and go through a, uh, multi-point inspection to make sure everything is, is sorted away in the way it needs to be when it gets delivered to us. My goal is hoping to have it here sometime before Thanksgiving and then we're probably looking somewhere right around the first year before we can get it put in service by the time we've been buying all of our equipment and we've put it over and so on and so forth. Probably looking around the first year.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then also, um, the, the total price of that truck actually bumped under the original contract price, but we still had a little bit of money in there to allot for our, uh, installation of commandments and stuff like that and all our equipment. So the actual price of the truck was one million one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and nine dollars. So it's just a little bit cheaper than what we're willing to just lay over.
That's always great.
Thank you all.
Thank you. First of all, I'm gonna apologize to the council for getting emotional when I first spoke, you know, to, tonight. Don't let that, I, I get a. But, uh, as, as Chief said, uh, one of the officers that went through that training, let me tell you something about that. Cars and that is a standard use training. I mean, you just can't go get certified and walk away. You have to be certified to do that. And I think Texas is one of the hardest, I've been through it and, and whenever the officer, you know, got lost, he said, Chief, I don't wanna go through that no more. But now it's good to have someone certified and that everyone's better. Also, we've been working with O K, um, we're actually been, I, I actually been working, um, they're handing out to the officers to come to work but they finally realized the security that they have is not doing the job that it needs to be done. So they asked to hand out to the officers and that's really great. They also had set up an apartment over there for an officer to use. Um, it's gonna be a satellite station where they don't front that way. Letting access go over there, eat lunch and, and, um, just be where their work is going. I think they got it set up for you, um, four hours in the daytime and four hours at night. But at the same time, it, it really needs to be done because the manager, Mayor Men, Mr. Ross, with a team of people that was actually, they went, wore her away and they helped her work from home. And we assured her that that, that shouldn't happen. You know, she shouldn't be able to, uh, I mean, she shouldn't be able to come to work and leave out of there. So we found out that day that there was a guy that was actually stalking and waiting on her.
And threatening her.
Yeah, and threatening her. We found that young man, that, that, and as soon as we found him, he was arrested, uh, fit to be ordered to serve down there. Um, so it is an issue there. Yes, yes. They are actually working on several things and I, like I said, they have a high off duty officer to work. And this young lady come in and we have officers back.
We should get this in, what council, the people that own it, were they, were they getting contacted with?
No, they had representation.
Yeah, so we were able to get a hold of their team, um, of the owners, it was four of them. Uh, and, um, they were very engaging and the chief was there along with, um, um, now the chief, children were there and myself. There was no council members there, just us. And we, and they were very, um, explicit about what they want. They felt for the safety of their employees, right? And so it was really wonderful that Chief was there and they were able to arrest that guy that day. I mean, he was stalking her, right? Telling her she better not come back and everything. O K, the apartment, so we're gonna make that safe, right? Um, we're gonna have a, a, uh, substation there, an apartment, off duty officers, and we want a fence, we be demanding that they put up a fence. Uh, the security there is not adequate enough, it's not. So, uh, the police need to be there and they're there.
You can do events there too to engage the.
Yes, sir, they talked about the fence. That's one of the big thing they agree, they agree on everything we have.
Car, cameras too?
And.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We, they are, we talk, I talked to them about going inside with us, well, our flock camera system. We got a flock camera system over there, which is a great thing. So now they are actually going to invest in it too. So I'm getting that information for the manager over there. They, they are engaged. I mean, I've actually worked over there four hours myself, but after this incident, I went to work. And you can tell they appreciate it. Um, now, there are some problems and the people that are causing the problem, all of them do not live. They do not live.
It's a beautiful complex.
Yes.
Now have a presence there, you can, uh, build trust, have events, do all kinds of things and turn the corners.
That's right. That's right. And when you do have problems, it's a, a group of people from Pageland that come in.
Yep.
So, I mean, look, seven of them have been arrested already. So they're, they're, they're working. So I do implore the council, you know, you made the, the police department tonight. Um, one of the goals, as the chief advised, that I'm gonna stay there as assistant chief, uh, one of my goals is actually trying to, you know, come to you all next year with more officers, cause we definitely need enough, you know, we need. And to do what we need to do anyway because he deserves for the safety and we're working around the clock to make it happen.
Chief, where you finished?
No, go ahead.
You mentioned, we bought those flock cameras several years ago before this, before it was here.
Correct.
That Mr. Long was here.
Yes.
Are there any places that we need, like, right now?
Yes, uh, we talked to, I'm talking, met with investigators, and you met two of the investigators online and I'm gonna tell you, one of the investigators, we, we are actually walking around now, seeing exactly what we're getting. Got six, um, I hit the six.
No, we got eight.
Eight.
We got eight cameras, um, and we can move those cameras. So, yeah, the police department will be responsible for identifying the places that are, uh, most conducive for us, the, in high crime areas, hotspots, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, they will, um, you know, get with their investigators and, and they'll put them there.
Yes, now the two that, um, the underside that we just had over there on Orchard, if it was not, we just solved the issue.
Yeah, we have two over there.
Yeah, we got two over there. One coming on both sides, so that's great there. You know, and we got.
One was shut out and we replaced.
Well, we did have one shut out one time, we got one out in the, the Harlem High area, that's just great. Um, coming in to fifty-two and leaving out fifty-two. So wherever we put them, we definitely have to make sure we have approval, you know, from, if it's a, a piece of property. But, you know, we got some going into O K, um, murder or whatever. So we had to contact some domain on the, and to make sure we could get them out. But we are working on some other area that we might need.
You just still have that fence coming in and out of, of O P over there?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
That's what, that's what the fence, they actually fenced that in.
Yeah. Beautiful.
Let me ask you this, sir. You look like you go from, from the fire here and then there's one brewing again over on, we've always had this problem on Orchard Street.
Correct.
To me, it's time one way in and one way out of there. One way in and one way out.
I don't know that, that, do we have like an encompassing work, like, I mean, something back to, to building on the model that you're doing at O K of Orchard Street and murder? Is there a possibility with that because that, that, those apartments then need to be torn down or, or, or something needs to be done there?
I mean, I, the council made with the, you all made with the owners of the basement down, we have a problem.
We have, we have, I, I, oxygen, red, oxygen. Okay, they won't return the call now.
They don't, they don't respond.
No, the person that gives the ring won't even come down.
Talk to them, I knew someone from there. We, we have, we have contacted, we have made contact with the people, talked to them. They always send some, some representative down, they don't really have.
Public nuisance, is what it is.
They were asking up for millions of dollars for that.
It's a public nuisance and so it's been that way for a while.
Well, I know someone was interested in buying that property and then went up, they jacked the price way high cause people gonna come in and ask to tear it down and rebuild. I mean, and that was a good thing that, you know, um.
We wanted to put an apartment in there.
Okay.
To leave, and because we own the property that abuts it, uh, on White Store and Orchard. And so that's why we just, it was a logical progression for us to take those lots and take over that property to make it L-shaped and just keep trying to rip it, working with other property owners, uh, who were renewing to people that were doing the, the bad stuff and they come in here and complaining to us about it.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, that was, that was the issue that, that we saw. So, uh, oxygen never, uh, returned any of that dollars. It's sort of hard to get them there up in New York, but if the mayor said he did, he did, but, um, we have been unsuccessful because we were, we were prepared about that problem.
Because a couple of people living in there is homeless. We have, we actually have chores on when we're breaking into the place and they sleep, you know, we know where two people with chores that actually, they, they sleep there. I mean, they, they, they go to jail, get out on their break.
There was a young lady that came in several times during your team, during your team in the first part of mine, on this council that was testifying about how bad it was.
Yeah, yeah.
And because women had her children, I don't know what happened to her, but, uh, uh, she very well spoken. But, uh, I don't know what ever happened.
So trying to get in contact with her was very, very impossible. The owner.
They never waited out of short.
Yeah, someone from Shaw comes down and breaks that, and then you catch them, you know, and what they tell us, they'll, I mean, they have done some work over there, they have done some work.
Oh, the parking is on Orchard Street?
Yeah, they have done some work there. Um, and it's, it's not the parking, we, if, the two or three houses on the right coming from the I D A side, and there are issues there. You know, and, and like I said, the parking is a problem. You know, part of it, you can park on the left, then you can't park on the right, but then you don't have no driveways from the end of them houses. I mean, them houses did, did not have any driveways. I mean, it's something like owners, they, they, they have a driveway, I mean, somewhere they can block the road, they have to. But you're asking them to put on top of them concrete, on sidewalks. So it is an issue there. So it's something, we're gonna have to continue to work for a while.
Well, we can take a look at that, Chief, uh, and Mayor, uh, who owned, it's a city street. Um, you know, I guess from a crime perspective, you would give your expertise that that would, you know, kind of curvy a little bit. Uh, I am in, in, in contact with the owner of, of some of the partners over there on Orchard Street.
Yes.
And he reached out to me because, you know, the last homicide's unacceptable. It's unacceptable, so we gotta do something.
Were the parking, uh, different parking situation alleviating the event over there? Do you think it would increase, uh, the activity if people were parking on the street?
I, I think it's the, the, the people, my, my issue is the three people, that, that, I mean, three houses.
Right.
And then it is the wall, so the uh apartment. The mo- the problem is that the three houses on the right there.
That's it.
I don't know who owned um I didn't need Mrs. Taylor on.
No, no, she's on.
I think Dean's.
Dean's on.
He can't live there.
Mister Wall, doesn't this okay?
Yes.
Wall's on that one.
Okay, so it's it's.
Houses up on the hill, that 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 is no man, there's no problem there. Right, Mr. Dean's and yeah, and the wall's on there.
Yes. So we are, we we have stepped up um patrol over there. We have actually been having officers set up at their apartments. But that's why I'm saying, you know, we we spread out. Like I said, we we work one area and then we take care of it, then they'll they move. And then we work that area. So what we have to do is get enough people to patrol, you know. I always say it and I'm not running up now because I know it's early part of the budget. We not even thinking about the budget right now. To my opinion, it takes twenty six, twenty six law enforcement officers to do what we need to do to to keep the orchards and Murrwood and all that. And we're at, we're at twenty now.
We're at twenty.
Yeah, and then with Cheryl, and I forgot to mention that tonight. I'm I'm gonna have to call them and ask here. Cheryl has been with the police department for.
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. She's been there through the ups, the downs and 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 um she's been there. So we want to, you know, I want to give a shout out to her for what she all done to and I will call her tonight and apologize. But she was here at the beginning of the night. Now they didn't introduce us without that.
So you actually need six more officers?
Yes, yeah, that's the goal. That's the goal. And I know it takes tax fails. I know it takes money. I know it's a lot of things that waiver I have to do. Um you know, that there's some goals we got. But you know, like I said, with the officers we got, they're great officers. They don't mind getting out, working and, you know, we had to cut back on overtime. So you know, which came up, we could do this off duty work. So that's great too. Um waiver housing is asking for off duty.
Yeah, they are.
Just throw it down there too. So it'd be great if we can get back. We don't wanna burn our officers. You know, uh actually when I was the chief, I was in some training and the the uh Shaw chief, I think the third one back from where they have now, Shaw men would work eight hours a day and they go work eight hours off duty. And the chief stopped it because them guys were burning theirself out. They were living mice, making a money, but they were burning theirself out. So uh that chief stopped it. Now, thank you, they don't work eight, six, for six months, they work eight hours, they can work eight hours somewhere else. And then they have to lay off for six months. So we didn't wanna burn our guys out here. Cause I can see what that can do.
So actually, we 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 have to look at safety first. So if the town gets safe, then you might get something to come into the town.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, the two a year, two officers, year three officers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything that you put in the exam, just go ahead and read them. So we don't get slammed on.
Yes, sir. That that.
But don't miss the colors.
Yes.
Don't please.
Um also, we went to the school um get out a lot, a lot of candy. So um we definitely kids for that. Um the chief wanted me to mention that. And uh I think that's about it unless y'all have any questions for me.
What if we uh budget we look at? The reason we went in the flock cameras, because we have a manpower. Remember Stephen Davis done that project, correct?
Correct.
So what if we look at the budget if we don't spend, if we look at least if we split, we got three more flock cameras, they were five, six thousand dollars?
Yes.
Five, six thousand dollars flock cameras. If we put in the budget, we get three bodies and three flock cameras or whatever to in the high need areas. Just, I'm just throwing it out there. Just throwing it out there for taking and meditate and think about it. But the reason we got into the flock cameras because of the things and I think the flock cameras that issue on uh one oh nine and the player got, you know, the sheriff, they could pick up on that flock. So they are help.
Yes.
They are helpful when we don't have a manpower. If you get that tag or whatever, you got it. So I I think in this day and time, the way the world is, Mister Ross, I know the budget's tight. I know it's tight, but if we can find a way that, you know, add one or two or whatever for safety. Anyway, I'll tell my story.
Just real quick, I um I I'm meeting with flock, flock officials and um there's a new drone program that law enforcement is using. Right? And so what it does is it it um kind of helps law enforcement officers, you know, have the manpower, you can use that drone to go answer radio runs and they'll tell you, hey, this suspect is here, so it's open. And then you send a, you send an officer there to go and arrest the person. So um it's a great method though. Um that that drone uh program.
We got one in there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
How old is it?
That's something we can take a look at.
Okay, we will. And also, um um the the chief contacted um Pastor Steve. Um you know, we we're definitely trying to make the police department be more expanded and you know, things that we go through. And we contacted Pastor Steve and and he agreed to come out and be our um chaplain whenever we need him.
Awesome.
So we wanna thank him for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Alright. Keep it hard.
Uh good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, um let's keep it short, cause everybody else done either. A couple of things. Water Park, do have two new employees, started with the water park. They started reading meters again for the month of November. Hopefully that's gonna work out good in our favor. Water Park's been doing a lot of leaks. Uh dry, hot weather and continued on into allegedly fall. Causing some leaks. Hopefully we'll see what happens when weather turns cold. So our department working on trying to purchase a jet truck. Our jet truck has finally reached its lifespan. We need to do something immediately on it. The working team's on three hundred pump station where we build on the southeast side of town. With Burn Street gonna be the first one being done. They're hoping to be done sometime in the January first, excuse me, end of December first, January. Paving and patching continues on the street department side. Do not be alarmed if we put patchy streets soon. Uh cold weather, rain and asphalt dust not mixed. The asphalt mills will not release asphalt dust. If not even that turn the patchy, we can't get asphalt.
And and just to add to that, Nick, so uh we started our street paving campaign. We've um filled over thirty pavels and we've um partially paved uh like five streets and we're still in the process of doing that. We've heard from the citizens, they complained about pavels and the condition of the streets and we are addressing it.
Uh our manly went down a cold driving time because we had a Christmas light. It is currently being repaired. Hopefully have a bike on, they have potentially rent, they hand this to install a Christmas lights.
We've done student, we've done that one time before with some belt or whatever. Once we did rent one to get them up. So we've been down that road before, so.
Uh sanitation, Lee Truckee is at the company that's gonna repair the engine in it. I haven't heard anything back from them. I don't know how long the process is gonna be. I know it's gonna start to fall and soon to that truck's repaired, we'll be back on it. Gravel truck may have to go down for a couple of days because we have a radiator failure in it. Hopefully radiator, a whole lot easier to get a hold of and the boot pieces. But it don't be longer than gravel truck goes down for a few days while we get under the repairs.
Lord have mercy.
So the the um the factor right is our fleet is recent, it's um it's length, it's length. This is great. And and council has approved appropriation for um the jet truck, which is almost several hundred thousand dollars and and some dump trucks and some other equipment that we need because the town did not buy equipment like they should have uh over the years. You don't do this all at once. You do it in increments. And that's a good government. And so we're under the eight ball, so this is the situation that we are facing.
Now, we understood that, that was six, they combined that tax increase. It was a reason for that tax increase.
Six, six cents, not six percent.
Yeah, it's six cents, not six percent, six cents, six percent, yeah. That's correct. Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, hands to the money, man.
This is the best part for life, son. Stay with me a whole longer.
Oh, no, puke, I'll sue you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh for those who don't know who I am, uh my name is Jacob Uver and I'm your finance officer here at the Town of Waysborough. First, I wanna thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for giving me the opportunity to be here. I'm very, very grateful to be back where my professional career started out of college. So very, very grateful to be here. So thank you all for the opportunity. Um so to the bounders at hand, so everyone can get home for supper, uh you have three documents in front of you tonight. Uh one is a budget versus actual packet that will detail all our year-to-date progress on our revenue and expenses and whether the general and water source are funded. This will be probably the biggest thing we got. Uh then second, you have a summary that maps our budget versus actuals as of September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And uh that will compare the same this period to last year's quarter up to September thirtieth. So give you the detail of where we where we work from twenty twenty-fourth to now, uh when it comes to September. And then finally, you'll have a net vote detailing some of the important figures that I'm gonna go through with you today. Um just to kind of help you get a little cheat sheet, uh just to give you some. Some quick little notes. So we're also on the general fund for some key highlights as of September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Our revenue collected is six hundred forty-three point one thousand dollars. Our expenditures are sitting right now at one point six million. Encumbrance is a hundred and seventy-three point two thousand, leaving us an operating deficit of about nine hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Now, I know that looks a little scary, uh just to point some things out. Our tax revenues are gonna continue to increase in the second half of fiscal year. You're gonna collect the majority, more of your taxes the latter half of fiscal year than, you know, you're obviously gonna spend more money in that first six months. It's gonna look real red. It's gonna look bad. I assure you, we're not, we're not that bad at all. Uh but um a lot of some of the things that have contributed to that, we're obviously like, like the meat truck needs to be fixed. Uh hiring the sheriff's office uh to come in when we were trying to reach the police department. Uh all that kind of stuff kind of goes into why we're sitting where we're at. But um just to give you an idea, if you look at your summary, you'll see that we're actually lower spent than we were last year, this time in twenty twenty-four. So we're actually not in a bad spot. Uh moving on to water sewer, some key fund highlights there. Uh revenue collected there is eight hundred ninety-six point six thousand. Uh one of our expenditures, the water department's about three hundred ninety-one point seven thousand. The sewer department's at two hundred seventy-one point seven thousand. And we've encumbered about six point seven thousand dollars worth of funding there. Uh leaving our net operating position at two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, reflecting pretty strong financial performance in our water sewer. Uh Mr. Grabba does the job, we keep track of his budget, making sure that we're online with a lot of things. Uh so we're doing very, very well there. Um something else I wanted to note, speaking to you guys for the first time, our cash and investments as of September thirtieth of twenty-five uh are totally pretty much really, really different compared to last year. Uh we have a total cash investment holding of about seven point eight six million dollars. Uh and that's an increase of about six hundred twenty-six, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars from last year. So we have a huge increase and the reason for that is because past administration, Mister Ross, as well as Miss Foreman, did a great job of moving a lot of our cash investment holdings into interest-bearing accounts. And that is a big reason why you have a huge gain from last year. Uh that's a really, really good move. Uh and that, like I said, it's attributed to strategic transfers of vital funds from operating accounts and interest-bearing investments. Uh and then hiring attorneys, as well as successful management from current a- administration. They've done a great job. So um.
Say it one more time, loud, it's like you.
Well, we're done, we're done. So uh where we stand with our cash and investment holdings, uh it's uh because of strategic transfers and oper- and our operating account, as well as hiring attorneys and attorneys, and we have a very, very great team here in the Town of Waysborough that's been making some good decisions. A very, very proud.
Thank you.
I'll let you hear that dance.
A- absolutely. So uh the audit is still in process. Obviously, some of these numbers could change pretty quickly um as the final numbers are coming in. Uh J D Watson's coming in, does a great job. Uh we know he's worked for them, so they do a great, great job. Um and so they're uh they're probably coming to the end of their audit process for us here pretty soon. And we'll be in a, we'll get those details here really soon, shouldn't we?
Speaking of the audit.
Yes, sir.
So they give us till like December, so we're gonna beat that. You know, the audit usually just give the tape, but we're not gonna be late.
Uh usually they file for extension. Uh if I had to guess, I would assume with the same this year. Uh there are a lot of factors that go into that. Uh sometimes it's a workload of your auditors, sometimes it's a different factor. I do not have that exact answer on the top of my head, but I would assume we have to file for extension. But I can give that.
Okay.
Absolutely. And then so lastly, close, if anyone has any interest in questions about our town's budget, where we stand, where we're headed, uh and would like to sit down and talk about it, I have an open door policy. Uh from Monday to Friday, eight AM to five PM, I'm in that office. I'm gonna be giving it my all, working hard for the Town of Waysborough. And uh so if anyone wants to sit down and talk to me, I welcome anyone to come in and let's sit down and get some information. So so um I have an open door policy, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Very professional.
Yeah, Mayor.
Alright, Mayor and member council, uh lastly, I know the time is close, just real quick. I want to highlight the fact that we got an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for Uptown, Waysborough, Uptown area. Very important. Uh it's very competitive. Uh we got it and Gasconia got it, right? And so the governor um gave out twenty-one grants, total hundred seventy-nine million dollars. We got a little piece of that, but we're very proud of that. That's a very competitive process. And lastly, um you know, folks, we we're in the midst of a government shutdown. And I saw a story this past weekend about crisis ministries and and they said that twenty-six percent of our population receive SNAP funds. Government system, right? So what does that mean? That means that a lot of folks in Waysborough receive SNAP funds, right? Um and um and the the bottom line is we we have folks that are are in need in our community. Uh in last year, um um the administration, we did something to get back. We um gave out a hundred turkeys for families and hams for families who didn't, who couldn't afford it for Thanksgiving. Um and I know we were trolling Facebook about that, saying that we were, that was equivalent to crank Lucas giving uh you know, food to the people he's selling, I'll see drugs to. But we're helping the community continuously. As a matter of fact, we're not gonna do a hundred, we're gonna do two hundred, right? It's not, Waysborough funds is my funds. I'm giving back to the community, right? So on November nineteenth, we'll give out two hundred ham and turkeys, right here to fry out, like we did last year. Uh we'll have hot chocolate and have a little DJ and we're gonna do it up, right? We'll give back because there's there are four people living in our community, right? And and I'm gonna help, if I send this CD, longer I'm here, I'm gonna help, right? So um that's really key for us. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna step further as the council, if they would approve that we uh waive late fees for our water and sewer customers until after the holidays, until January the sixth.
Seventh.
Second.
Thank you. So in favor.
This is one time?
It is, it's a one time, right, one time, a one time up until January the sixth, right?
One time. One time.
And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Uh um council, I would ask. I'm gonna do it in, well, it's it's not about, I mentioned about the crisis ministry. If you can help, if you can't, come to state. Not, you have a household run yourself, but if you can help, but if you can't pray for them. They're struggling. One, one pallet. And if you are people out there, my church ever needs a Baptist church. We do every third, first, second and third Thursday, depending on that one o'clock, we do meals. From January to right now, we fed five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight meals. Free meals, five thousand six hundred thirty-eight, free meals, plus food. So there's a need. Don't care what side of the aisle you want, there's a need. And so folks, there's a need. You're gonna press a minute, buy, just put it in there. There's a need. And I, as the mayor, I'm gonna do what I'm supposed to do.
So the food bank is running out of food also.
Yeah, 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 it's just.
The food banks are shot.
Yeah, they are, they are. Alright.
Hey, reference our initiatives, uh the county is gonna help us as well, give donations uh for the turkeys and the hams. So they're gonna. So they're gonna, they're gonna partner with them as well, um, with the helper partner.
All right, you have Mr., uh.
Mr. Elkins.
Mr. Elkins. So, uh, council, any comments from the council?
We're, uh, also trying to raise awareness and get people donating to Feed My Lambs where they want to, to donate formula and baby supplies. Babies didn't ask to come into this world, they won't be the first ones to suffer because if you look on Amazon or eBay or Walmart, uh, formula is expensive. Diapers are expensive, you know. And, uh, that's what we're asking people to do. We're already getting, uh, invited to donate to Feed My Lambs. Uh, she has it down, Lisa has it down to a science, argue with us too, of need distribution. So please. As, uh, Mayor says, begin.
I, like I say, I'm high and really proud of what we are doing and what we are accomplishing. And I'm proud of our police officers and we just gotta get behind them and stick behind them because if we're set, if they're counted, it's safe, then people will wanna come in. Nobody wants to come into Canada where the crime rate is high. So we need to stick behind our police officers and, uh, they'll do what they need to do. And Mr. Wild, I'm really proud of you and people that do the work for me. Because when we came, we did the red, but thank God we're in the red now.
Need a motion to adjourn. Nobody, need a motion to adjourn.
Seven.